We are ready, uh, we're good.
All right, welcome everyone to the November second twenty twenty three, Bill Williams on board of bill meeting. This is like continuation on eighty eight, I know where, what?
That is correct.
Yeah, he said. Sorry, sorry. Get down with my old glasses.
This is a reminder of recusing myself.
Yes.
Surprise you can't.
Yes, well, I know he's good. Where we left off too is the board wants a little bit more information and so you have that in your packet.
And if you don't mind, just for formalities, your name and address for the record.
Sure, John General and my address is Quinney Fisher Road, Rethan, Massachusetts.
What did you bring us tonight, sir?
All right, so what I've provided is a operational outline of the proposed business as well as a sketch of the property and the.
Thank you, hold on a second. Will we get feedback from someone? Okay, Illinois again.
So what I've, what I've written up is a much more detailed overview of the vehicle storage and I'll say miscellaneous storage as we discussed last time. So that way you have a lot more detail about what I will be doing in the property or what my intended use of property is.
Okay.
I don't know if you had a chance to review it or.
Um, I have.
Okay.
Any, well, I go any questions or comments?
You know, much more details and very streamlined and specific, so.
All right, um, I'm, I'm certainly not breaking, not giving quite a question yet. On the opening page, it talks about the first and second paragraph, appointment innovation zone.
Correct.
And then in going to your hours of operations, it says contactless drop off.
Correct. Correct. So in other words, somebody could make an appointment with me, say, I'm gonna drop off a car at this time at me. So that the hours of operation are just the only hours that I would allow any appointments.
Now, we also state sixteen vehicles slash twenty eight, if you do the lifts.
Correct.
Um, how we hit the sort of normal flooding vehicles?
Because if for some reason that miscellaneous storage and pallet racking area is not used for miscellaneous storage and pallet racking, there could be a few more there as well as in this back. I said vehicles because in this back area, it'd be possible to store some motorcycles. If that's what somebody wanted to store. So that's why I kept it generic at vehicles. I don't know what the mix is gonna be.
I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna go on a couple things without me. Um, and I'm sure, um, other people have certain of those. I agree, drop off being a question.
Not planning to. No, it'd be like wiping them off so they don't bring any dirt and debris into.
I'm reading on.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, absolutely.
I, I do wanna give you a conversation while we grow. As you can see here, create road committee to find improvements.
Correct.
Do we know who actually.
So I. I did some research into this.
I'm gonna open up.
And every building, including this one, that has access to that right, it's a right of way. They all have the same statement in the right of way of deed. So it doesn't look like eighty six. It was originally granted back when all of those properties were sectioned off. So it's a right of way that's the same right of way for each property on that. So it's not owned by anyone, as far as I can tell. And again, I, I couldn't find the original deed. There's a deed from nineteen oh one or nineteen twelve that is not in the Norfolk County. It's probably in paper. I just haven't gone to them. Um, but it's everybody has the same. So I looked up all the abutting properties and they all have the same statement, which is.
Same, same language.
Exactly same language. So as far as I can tell, it's a right of way that was granted when they were all created. Um, and therefore it's. Like, I'm not owned by anybody.
And so it's not owned by the parcel that we're talking about?
No, because.
So do you have a, you have the same language on your deed then?
Correct. So it just says that I have access to this right of way. Legally, so.
It is kind of bizarre.
It is.
That would mean every home on that street. It's gotta be on every deed for every.
It is. It is. That's what I looked up because I was curious to find out who owned it. And I, like I said, there was one deed I couldn't find, which was the original that created all those parcels before they were sold off. And that was back from what nineteen twelve and I just couldn't find it.
Yeah, it doesn't have a parcel number. Let me see if I can grab it off. Oh, yeah. I've got, I'm sorry, four seventy two, man.
No, go right ahead. So do you say, I mean, the one thing that jumps out at me is you're going with the hatching a lot of outdoor parking. Correct. That was one thing you asked me to define where. It depends on the size of, basically it would be car trailers is what I would expect to be out there. It's hard to say how many, but maybe six or eight.
Cause I, I mean, I guess that I would think would be one of my concerns upon the neighbor, that there's a lot of vehicles.
So that's one of the reasons why.
That's my, a major.
Yeah.
My chat would be one of our.
So that's one of the reasons I included pictures of the property as well as fencing that's around the property. So the two abutting names, directly abutting neighbors have fencing and that's why on the drawing it depicts this existing fence line. There's a white vinyl privacy fence on. If you're looking at the drawing on the right hand side, and then there's a somewhat decaying stockade fence on the left hand side. And so from both properties.
The list looks like it's, I mean, was it like four feet tall or six feet?
They're all six foot fences.
Okay. But I think coming down the street, looking at the outside pocket. We got trails lined up all there.
You wanna be able to see it from the street.
Yeah, from Pine Grove, you can't, you can't see in there.
So there's a picture, there's a picture in there that shows basically sitting at the, the main Pine Grove Street, looking down that right of way. And that's why I have the parking off to each side of that right of way so that you don't see anything from that. So that would be the goal is that you're not looking down the street seeing, cause I also need to have a movement area in there. So I can't. You know, I can't obscure the door, the garage door that's there and I can't, um, not have parking out front and you know, temporary parking. So that's why delineated less than twenty five, four hours and greater than twenty four hours on the drawing. So the goal is to not see this. That, that's what I'm trying to depict.
So your attorney hasn't done a title search on it yet? You haven't got that far?
Um, she was expecting it to come back, but, um, but yeah, it's done yet.
So, so the roadway on Matthews, it's interactive map. It's called LG Road. And if you look at the, uh, at the frontage, it's an open line on the lot, on the parcel. And then on the back of it, it's a closed line. So it looks, it appears like it doesn't connect to this parcel, but it goes right by it. The, there's three homes that it accesses. You know, that provides access to. Yeah. And then it's a closed line at the bottom.
So there's, there's two, there's two homes that are direct access. That is their primary driveway, the home. On the corner, it's a secondary driveway.
So that line would indicate that that property does. It, it almost shows that it's a separate parcel. Like if you touch on it, it says, um, so it's just connecting to the first parcel. And then it, it is a, there is a line, there's a line for the street going down and then it closes right at the parcel. So even if you, if you touch each one, it, it, um, it show, it goes to each parcel. So it doesn't show who owns that parcel. Yeah, that's weird.
It, it, like I said, I think it needs a road committee. But these are all the parcels. So here's seventy two and eighty, eighty two, eighty four, eighty six, and they all have. Right here, subject to easement, right here. So that's about utilities. All right, this one, this is the.
Does the town follow that?
According to the DPW, yes, to, to the edge of eighty six.
I, I. We've been on a private road for many years in this town. Um, the town always followed it for safety reasons. About fifty, had to give the angle ones there. So, and private was most.
No road is private?
It was up to about five.
I thought it was accepted.
Yeah.
So that's what they told me when I talked about the DPW. They said it's a private road. They do what's called a safety pass.
Yeah.
So they don't do a very detailed pass. They're not cleaning it right to the edges. They do enough to get.
So the emergency vehicle down. It, it would have to be a private road for these people who have built houses on it anyway.
Yeah.
You know, because if there's no frontage, they, they weren't, weren't able to grant a building permit on it. Do you have a how long ago these homes built?
They predate the eighty six.
Yeah, they're, they're older homes, but, um, it, it's a, it's a named way. So it must be a private way.
Well, it's not named that anymore. So if you look at the sign, I know if you look at the sign at the end, it's just, it says eighty two to eighty six.
Yeah, that's, that's the sign. That's not what. The, the, anyone's rubber sign. So everybody's address is Pine Grove. So they're calling it off the main road. Um, you know, it must be a private road to have frontage on and there's no other way to explain it. You know? Uh, I don't know what was there first. Was the building there first or any of the?
The houses were there.
So it was, they were probably made on a private way. Yep.
Backline.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that statement I kinda outlined is the one on every deed.
Questions, guys? Will we open the public?
Uh, yes, I had a question. Um, you were saying that due to the height of the ceiling, none of the pallets on the, um, front of the building left of the garage door, uh, they're not gonna be too high. What, what are you storing outside? Uh, in paragraph, um, six, um, you just kind of talk about in the area at the front of the building to the left of the garage door, designated for a couple of road pallets.
So that's inside the building.
Okay.
That's this area that says miscellaneous storage and pallet racking on the drawing.
And on the outside, it's only gonna be vehicles?
No, it'd be likely trailers, no vehicles. And so that's, so one of the things I did, I, I identify more is I'm toward the bottom of the first page. So it's for the attached drawing, there's outside storage identified, all outside storage should be paved surfaces only. Um, any outside store would be no taller than the building. Consists of only registered items that can be moved at any time. So not a heap that's somebody's project that is just junk outside.
I'm glad that statement is, is there.
Uh, none of the following would be stored outside, car parts, engines, batteries, waste fluids, junk cars, pallets, scrap lumber, metal.
If it's the height of the building, can you see over the fence?
You, you could see it over the fence. Correct. Yeah. Not by much. The eaves are twelve feet tall and the peak is three feet tall. And that means a very shallow, slow roof. Okay.
And, um, you, you say what you, what you're not gonna store. Would it, would it make sense to just say what you're going to store or is that gonna be much larger list?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure at this point. All I, all I know is that I wouldn't store junk. Like the goal is not to store junk and whatever's there has to be moved there. So you know, let's say we needed to get access behind the building or something. I need to be able to move these things out of the way so that I can get access by it. So nothing permanent.
Thank you.
Um, I, I do have a question, I guess, maybe about the operations. So if you're doing, um, periodic car starting, is there any ventilation related to that when you're?
There needs to be ventilation. Yep. So it used to be a wood shop years and years ago. So there's actually louvers and things on the building. So I would wanna add fans to that, just to ventilate any uh, gases that are coming up.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that I did learn is that the building is required, just because of its size, to have a fire alarm system, a connected fire alarm system. Is that would also have carbon monoxide monitoring? That's all required these days.
Okay, okay.
It does not currently have that.
Or you'll leave the public?
I have one more.
Next one?
Just in terms of noise, what do you expect?
It's gonna be such infrequent use, honestly.
Yeah.
Once they're there, um, one of the thing, one of the models that I'm using is the Rhode Island Car Ball. And I, I like their operation. So they have a couple different business models, but one of their business models is static storage. You drop it off, minimum of five months, you pick it up. The other ones are, uh, depending on the price point, um, one movement per month or two movements per month. So there's not a lot of movements, even if everybody picked the biggest package, you're still not moving atomic cars every month.
I guess what, I guess your demographic is that a lot of people with seasonal storage, storage of vehicles.
That's what I would expect.
I think, yeah, my concern, I think I raised at the last meeting too, is that I imagine not a lot of activity except for like Fourth of July comes around or springtime and everyone's wants to access their convertible.
Yeah.
My, my concern too is the noise. I'm guilty. I would show a lot of people are guilty of it, but you've got a hot rod, you're coming up and down this little private street and revving it up and these, I just got it out of stores. Let me see what it's gonna do and, um, that and to be honest with you, car trails coming up and down this little street, they're a lot, they make a lot of noise. So I, I do have some noise and some concerns with residents.
Okay.
Car haul trails coming in and out of this little street, I have a concern. And, and I, I don't need to pick on them up, but guys with hot rods coming up, coming down the street, the bikes.
Yeah. So one thing I was planning on doing, I don't think I really care, was to actually install we limit signs on the street.
Yeah.
Just again, just to, to help with those kinds of things, you know? I can't a hundred percent control everything, but.
But it's, 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 and I said, it's, it's gonna be a reality. A guy's breaking his bike out for the air or, you know, coming up with sixty eight come out with side pipes on it. Um, you got these.
I, I, I would hope that people are better than that.
They'll get that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, this is a small residential street and the two stick points that I have, to be honest with you, is the noise and the outside storage. I know it's static. But beyond the stack, the common and gullens of these vehicles, I think you can you're in the class, guys, you, you.
I know. Mine's not loud, but yeah, I get it.
Any other questions? I'm gonna open up to the public. Any of the public have any comments, concerns, questions? If you don't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Yeah, it's Cheryl Liam, I'm in eighty two Pine Grove, right there, right at the beginning of the street. Um, the water puddles up pretty deep right around my driveway and it's my driveway and it gets very icy in the winter time. Yep. So we talked about the plans going up and down the road to do a sweep of it, not often. They do once in a great while.
Yep.
But if you have traffic coming up and down that road and it's solid ice, my, my property is right there.
It's slippery.
Yes. So that is.
Are you in the blue, the blue?
I do, you know, my son. It comes through.
Yeah. So that is, that's my concern. That's always been my concern, but nobody seems to know who owns the road. At one time I was home and it was LG and you know, we talked a little bit about that and then, um, you know, so nobody's really taking care of the road. And it does, the water comes halfway up my driveway sometimes. So it gets, it's like, are you over there? Even walking through, you know, nobody can really come up and down the street without going through the puddle and the ice.
Obviously, we got residents up the street here and maybe a, maybe off base and someone could shut me down for a long. Have you folks gotten together with the town, but tried to turn it into a, a public way?
So I have, um, an email.
If you don't mind your name and address.
Uh, Chrissy Massey, sixty eight Robinwood Road, Dedham. Um, I'm the trustee of the estate.
Okay.
Um, I found an email, my mom, my mom's paperwork, um, basically going back and forth with the town and them telling her the steps to take, um, to, for the town to take possession of the road. Um, so other than that, I don't.
And how long ago was that?
I don't know. Ronald D. Martino, Dennis Spring. Um, that was in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, I just gotta go to town, town meeting, but I can, well, so, um, they don't own the road. They don't owe the fee interest. Yeah, they don't own that parcel. And it's not coming upon them to get it approved, number one. Uh, the town issued permits for three, how long ago? The oldest one I saw was nineteen forty six, so a predate zoning.
Yeah.
So it's a, it was, it's probably a private road. Um, if, if they don't own it, you know, if it's not in there, um, it doesn't look like it is. It's, this is the town website and, and the gray, the gray, um, all the gray lines of town roads and they, they're making, this is our website and it's a gray line and it's a gray road. So, you know, I mean, it's showing it as a road. Um, so like I said, if the house is predate zoning, they will give them permits on this right of way or private way or whatever. And the line closes off at their lot. So it wouldn't even make sense for them to go for a road. They don't own it. You know?
Do we own it as a town?
I, I think we must, we must own it because we have it as a gray line and it's, it's separated from everyone's parcel that's probably in this room. So, um.
So you're telling me it's over the can of worms?
Well, what I'm telling you is, is no parcel number on it on our website and, you know, um, roads don't have parcel numbers either and it's it's designated as a road. So, you know, look, I, I really don't know how to classify it other than it's probably a private way that they, they gave three building permits for. They, they diced up three lots. All the other lots are long and skinny. They took one lot and made three out of it. So you know, in nineteen forty six, there was no zoning, you know, um, and they've been passing and repassing on it for years, it looks like. So it's probably, you know, it's probably a town parcel. That's why they, that's probably why they even been, they've been going down there with a truck because a lot of times they will not do that unless they're forced to do it like in your subdivision. All those houses are paying taxes on this road.
Yep.
And it took the longest time to get it, um, accepted and brought up to stuff to be accepted, you know, so you know, that's just, just the way it is.
So we follow Franklin.
Yeah.
For public safety.
Right. But you know what? Franklin probably plows one for us some girl, you know? Um, so, um, you know, I don't think, you know, to determine what the road is at this point, I, I, I think it's probably part of a town parcel, you know? Um, it's not their parcel because the line's closed right there. So it's not LG's road. It's just as, as residents down there, um, you know, take what you hear and I'm not sure who to go to, but, um, it's not his office, that's just me. One question would be, yeah, one question would be, who issued the right of way? Who's given permission to use it?
That's that original deed that I can't find.
Okay. So that, that's, that would have to be, you know, clarified as to who's given the right of way on this.
Correct. I believe it's seventy two. What I didn't tell, I, I think when they, whoever the original owner of all of those properties was, it, it's listed in some of the deeds, but I think it got peeled off of seventy two in order to create those other lots. So they basically took a, a large parcel, sectioned it off, made a right of way so that you could get to these other parcels. But I think the right of way came off in what is now seventy two.
Well, I think, you know, when you do your due diligence on your purchase, if you end up purchasing this, um, your attorney's gonna if you get in a bank loan for one, you have no frontage other than thirty. You know, I don't even know where your frontage is. But you know, a parcel without frontage, the bank's gonna want an explanation, they need to finance it, you know? Um, so i- if it's thirty feet on a private, private way, then it's thirty feet on a private way, I guess. I mean, that's something that you're gonna have to deal with.
That's something he has to do.
Yeah, that's, that's something that he's gonna have to deal with. I mean, what, we're trying to determine who's supposed to be taking care of this right of way.
Right.
I, I really don't think it falls on the current property on it because it's not their parcel. It's a private way and, and four people have granted use on a private way, it looks like. So yeah, I don't know. Maybe they have an association, set up an association and everybody take care of it, maybe.
That's what I'm recommending.
That's what a lot, that's what a lot of private ways do. Yeah. I, I concern it tonight though is the zoning.
Right.
Yeah, special permit. So I'll, I'll keep it open. Yeah. So I mean, if we don't talk about the roadway, no. There's a base, there's a base of the number you doesn't know. So. Anyone else in you? Audience, questions, concerns? Comments?
Um, I will say, no, your main concern is like the cars parked outside and, um, before I have like photos of like how the cars were before and there was like two box trucks and, um, also other vehicles for staff, um, and there was eighteen wheelers delivering products three times a week. Um, so compared to like a trailer on with a classic car on it compared to eighteen wheelers going down that small road and taking out fences. I think the use, um, it would be more detrimental to current business than that we're pulling.
Less intrusive, is that what you're trying?
That's right.
Well, yeah, I think they have eighteen wheels going down there Monday.
Any comments for?
Can we address the public with a question?
Go right ahead.
I was just wondering, um, do, are you for or against the this, this, the going through?
Well, I mean, it depends on the noise and you know, there's a lot of, it's a quiet area and yeah, there were traffic drill trucks that went down many times before. I never had any issues with them. But the people in the corner and, and, you know, so if they're larger trailers, you know, making that corner is kind of tight. Uh, you know, but I mean, as far as if it's just noise, to me, it's the noise part of it. If it's, you know, not gonna be too noisy or screaming cars coming up and down the road, you know, that type of thing. Um, you know, and there are some kids in the neighborhood and she has, yeah, four little kids. Yeah.
No, and.
That's my concern.
Part of this board is to determine part of this areas, um, the character and the nature of the neighborhood, how it impacts the neighborhood. And I think we all take that extremely seriously. Cause your folks live there. It's actually live there and relying on us to help you out. As, as the applicant lives us to help them. There's one of the questions, um.
Peter, you know, one checks in. I know there's three, it looks like three participants. I don't know if anybody has anything to say on.
Anyone zoom, have any comments, questions? And let me see one question.
Nope, all set. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I guess, uh, let's see, I'm wishing to close the area.
Motion to close right here.
Any second. Pause available?
Hi.
Hi.
Discussion.
I feel like it's not as bad as it used to be. It's an improvement to before. I just worry about, um, how much? How is it gonna look from the neighbors? So if the neighbors are sitting in the backyard or are they gonna see things over the fence? Is that gonna be bothersome? But of course, my main concern would be noise.
Yeah.
But the fact that it's not gonna be as noisy as it seems like it might not be as noisy as before is a bit of improvement and hearing from the public that was never a big issue made me feel better about it. Before that, I was more worried about the noise personally.
You don't serve those noise.
So I mean, I, I live around the corner on, on Deer Run, so, um, I go that way all the time, just, you know, cause it's a cut through to get to Pulaski. So a lot of people do use it as a cut through. So obviously adding more traffic to the road can be concerning and it is like there's a lot of wetlands off, on Pine Grove. There's like a, it floods, you know, Pine Grove isn't that great of in condition as well. So I think taking all that into consideration, um, regardless of the business, if we're gonna stay as the current business or something similar or this new business, I think we need to make sure we're taking that into consideration. But there is already, I think, a, a fair amount of traffic because people do use it as a cut through to, to skip the light. And there is like a roaming gang of teenagers on motorbikes that go in and out of the neighborhood. I don't think you guys have seen them. They come down to your run all the time. So, um, if it's any less noisy and less intrusive than that, then I think it's, it's not, not as bad. Um, yeah, I'd really like to stop them from doing that, but they're.
Actually, one, one of your comments about the road being flooded and potholes and, um, and they slowed down. So the cars coming and going that.
Yeah, I drive very slow through there because it's, it's really not well maintained at the moment. And like I said, there's like, there's a retaining basin on one side down near the end of Pine Grove. And then like, there's a really small house in the back and they're selling it and they're calling it waterfront property. So I'm there. Yeah. So I mean, I just think in the grand scheme of thing, all of the roadways in that area could use some better maintenance. Yeah.
The town's been working on that issue for years and he is.
Yes, there's been all that stuff on the road. Yeah, yeah. But I mean.
So the problem with it down there is, um, when you get to a certain point, it's floodplain.
Yeah.
So I don't know who has flood insurance down there or not, but, um, it, it is in the flood, it's floodplain on both sides. Um, the road probably, the, the ground is saturated at different times and it doesn't hold asphalt that well over time and it breaks up. I'm, I think everybody has seen that. Especially with this private road going down, you know, there's, um, it does get broken up because when it gets very, very wet and the traffic goes on, it breaks up the asphalt. So that's been a problem with that area.
Yeah.
Is good for my concern, because if the road is in such bad condition, you know, that guy was sixty-eight, come out, it's not gonna be.
Nobody's gonna be speeding up and down.
That's that's concern of mine, it really is.
But I think, you know, um, really getting into the property itself, I mean, it seems like. This gentleman is serious about his business, just looking at his outline and his business plan, I think, um, he's. Definitely gonna fix the building up and make it look better down there, uh, you know, I think I probably most of you could agree with that. Um, you know, it's, it's an older building, um, and um, it it could use some fixing up. And it looks like his plan shows that he is gonna fix it up, uh, he seems like a serious business owner.
Uh, one of, one of my questions that I've put to you, uh, I'm not sure you would know this, um. This would be a permit for a business out of this building, do we not have to abide by the. Number of parking spaces and all the handicap spots?
No, because he's not disturbing anything, so it's existing, whatever's existing right now, it is a change of use.
Yeah.
And that's why it's here.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, the paved area, if he wanted to expand, everything's disturbed, that's paved. So if he wanted to expand, that would trigger, um, um, our regulations as far as um, parking.
Handicap.
Well, he has to have handicap no matter what, if he is a business, so um, every, for every twenty-six spaces, he has to have a, have a handicap spot.
Cause I think it's, what's this, ten thousand square feet?
But it's probably not.
Eighteen spots, but that's how I'm buying a lot.
Yeah, you have to have one no matter what, up to that, and then over that, you have to have two.
So is he required to have those?
He has to have one handicap parking spot, no matter what.
But we don't require him to have the other eighteen, cause he's not disturbing everything?
Unless he's paving, unless he's gonna dig up and pave more, then he has to. Not, not exist, if you're just gonna do existing, but yeah.
I would say that, I have concerns with the outdoor parking, I I think we should have stipulations with that and. Have some sort of a set number or whatever. Cause that looks like just, looking at the hatch here, I hate that. Vehicles.
Yeah, we we have other businesses down there about to storage. It's amazing what winds up staying there.
I mean, I will say from the street, you, like, you can't see it. Unless you're looking for it, so I think it's what the abutters would be seeing, like, if you were just driving by, you didn't see the building, it's.
Overall, for our point of view, from the town's point of view, whether you can see it or not.
Right, right.
Um, you know, and I, and I won't name the business, but there's one business in in town that. And I've recently seen them have to clean it up, I'm not sure if someone's involved, but it almost got to be a junkyard back then.
Right, right.
And, you know, it's repair business and, I'm sorry, I'm concerned about your storage.
Yeah, our, our biggest problem, um, is auto repair places, they just get out of control. Um, and we end up having to, um, you know, um, get into their business because they make a mess out of things. Um, you know, it's allowed in the business district auto repair, and uh, you know, if they're not professionals, they just. You know, they don't care about the appearance of their place and that's when the town has to get involved. You know, like this, this business that he has, he can't store any vehicles without license plates either. Because that's a dealer, you know, that would require a dealer's license, so everything that he brings in has to be registered and insured and left that way. He can't have vehicles with no plates on them, they can't come and take a plate off unless it's in the building undercover. That nothing outside, everything has to be registered.
Yeah, that's why I stipulated that.
Just reminder to that, right now, the discussion, don't, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but you guys, the the hearing is closed, so. They're gonna just deliberate amongst themselves because that's the purpose of the hearing being closed, I just, just to protect us.
So what do you have, Austin, now to a storage?
I think, yeah, it's a tough one because I think that the, um. I guess I feel just more comfortable about these, like, even how you stipulate on the interior, how many vehicles that may be stored. A little more trails. Yeah.
Cause I mean, don't forget, we were talking trails, it could be anything from, that's relative. All or two, they say the toy hall camp, I mean, it's, it's.
But I guess again, um, to Elizabeth's point, I guess, um, if if you're saying from it, it's not as visible.
I mean, to me, it's not, I've never really seen anything back there, but I, you know. But I'm not an abutter, I'm just someone who's walked by and not seen anything, um. I mean, I guess it, uh, about the outdoor parking, would we need to, similar to some of the commercial buildings where they've got like the turning radius? Figured out here, like, with, would we need to stipulate that if they've got big trailers that need to kind of swing around? No.
I think that it would be, is the fire department taking a look at it?
That's just what I was thinking too, if we got outside storage there. Do we have enough room for fire departments to come and go and?
Where are you proposing, where's the outside storage?
That fire department would determine that in the last page.
That really should, we need to remember the hearing is closed. And that was information, you, you know, that really put a stipulation within the condition that he has to conform with. Whatever the language you would like to put in.
I like that.
Okay, you know, however you wanna word that as a, as a condition of that permit, if you so choose to do that.
Yeah, so the fire department's gonna wanna get around the building. Every building in town, they wanna get, be, you know, commercial, this type of warehouse, they wanna be able to get at least three sides of the building if possible.
So Tim, could we word it like that, what you were saying, just put like, in conformance with the.
Yeah, you have to.
However, you want.
To maintain.
So hopefully, you could, if you want that, you could put that as a condition.
I mean, I like your, they're talking sixteen to twenty-eight vehicles, you know, we want sixteen to twenty-eight trails out there. For the limitation, I mean, can be stored.
More, more what's outside the building than inside, what's inside that I feel like.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about is the ratio of, you know, sixteen to twenty-eight, we can wind up with sixteen to twenty-eight trails out there.
Right.
Everyone's got a car. So maybe we put it in. The wording of the.
Some people might not have a trailer.
Yeah.
Maybe someone will follow them and pick them up.
Yes.
Probably whatever the fire department determines will, will determine how many can be on that site. Correct him or no, i- it's what's your take on that?
Well, I mean, the fire department has to have access, be able to have access, so if you're gonna park, um. Vehicles over here, they're not gonna be able to get to the side, if you're gonna park them here, how are they gonna get in and and get around to the side, you know, um. So you, there would have to be, um, the ability to move an apparatus down the side, you know, in case of an emergency.
So they would actually look at this and say, in this area, you cannot park.
You just, yeah, you would have to be able to maintain a clear, like, even if it was a hatched area like this.
Yeah.
For filing, you know, cause there's no marked filing around this building, obviously.
The hookups are in the front.
So there's almost like a natural limitation to the.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Exactly.
So we might not have to limit it as long as we say that statement.
Obviously, giving him some flexibility within the the plan that he can perform, which I think if you want him. Have that ability based on whenever he meets with the fire chief.
You could make it subject to.
Right.
You know, uh, fire department.
That's right.
And meeting with the fire department.
So if someone wants to, um, make a motion?
Do we wanna add any other stipulations?
Exactly what you were just going, if there's anything.
Just make sure that we cover all stipulations, we wanna add. I'm okay with the operation hours, especially on the weekend.
You're okay?
Nine, nine till one.
Okay.
That seems very reasonable.
I mean, it's not, it's up till one o'clock. It's nine AM to one o'clock.
Right.
Yep.
And not after.
Not after one.
Okay.
Right. I, I, I feel like the applicant really went, uh, with very detailed. Yeah. And the application, I really appreciated that, uh, he gave it a lot of attention, he thought about everything, you know, down to working with the neighbors. To create a road committee, you know, that, that that shows kind of the intent of the applicant, so I, I do admire that. Um, but again, the concern is, uh, the neighbor's gonna be annoyed and I feel like nine to one is pretty reasonable. I could see some others wanting to do ten to one, to ten to two, for example, rather than nine to one.
And that's just for his customs, he's got right access to the building twenty-four seven.
Right.
Personally, yeah.
I mean. Do you wanna, do you wanna put a stipulation? If most complaints are received, certain amount of most complaints are received, up to three, come back to the board, that. Something you wanna add?
We do that.
Is that, is that?
That's kind of tough, though, uh. But noise complaints, if there, if there are, if it is excessive noise, it's a police issue. And the police, you know, someone, if it's disturbing someone and it's really getting annoying, they can always call the police and they'll come down.
So no need to involve.
I don't, I don't know how you would condition it.
You really, yeah, and and I will tell you that, that the police won't respond unless it's beyond the noise hours and.
Right.
Person calls gotta know that because.
Our noise hours are very, um, broad. In in our regulation.
Unless it becomes a danger to.
Right.
The cars racing up and down.
If it's a continuous noise, then it is considered a complaint. If it's, you know, um, intermittent, it's, you can't enforce that.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking like, more different. Different abutters, you know, complain, you know, two or three, then maybe.
Say what harm intended, bring them in if it, if it is to say, listen, you know, cause this is something that we issue and we can take it away.
I just don't know how you would condition that, cause you're going for an approval there, it's, you know, I mean, you're conditioning it with hours. And those hours, uh, you're, you're thinking that these hours are, um, put forth. Because it's, you know, it's during the day.
During a noise time.
Even with our noise by law, you know, that, that's well after our, you know, our times. Technically, you could make noise earlier than that and longer, some of them until nine PM on the weekend, but, you know, but working outside. So you're conditioning with his hours, which is.
My, my, my thought was that there's noise on, not from vehicles coming back and forth, but if something happened on prem.
Yeah.
And looking at the business law, I, I don't, um, it just pay stack noise from the building. Uh, my concern was the coming and goings.
If we get calls, we've got you.
I understand what you're saying, I just thought that.
I, I think the conditioning on approval of the fire department, that they can. Get their, their apparatus in and around the building, and that will. Obviously dictate how much outdoor storage you can have, cause they may say nothing within fifty feet of the building. We need the fire law, which is right there on.
And well, it would be up to, once we render this decision, one of the conditions is for him to go to the fire department and make sure it's, and that's, that's.
So the fire department is gonna be involved shortly after because he has to get his. Tested once a year, um, and if you make it a condition, then they'll go down there and they'll review and they'll tell him, you know. We, we need to get over here, I need to get by here, they'll, they'll let you know, so.
And then, I'd be also really benefit the applicant because if something happens, fire department needs to get so, I would like that in the. That condition in. Fire department, yes.
I have no other concerns. So a question, um, basically, so you, we talked about the outdoor space, so could we, is there interest in something like a height limit? Cause the fence is six foot five.
Right, it's limited by the height of the building.
Building, but a, a trailer is. Definitely not much taller than eight, twelve feet, plus uh, tractor trailer car hauler, then they're like thirty feet.
Well, tractor trailer is probably twelve something, yeah.
Right, so I could let my limit the business model and it wouldn't really help the applicant.
I mean, if it was a full blown, eight, you know, eighteen wheeler car hauler.
You mean the storage, the height of a storage item?
Storage, yeah.
Oh, he means the height of a permanent thing that's gonna be stored out there.
A trailer.
Is, are you gonna store tractor trailer?
I would think tractor trailer is fit very well down there.
Okay.
Well, it is, car haul trailer, they're big, yeah.
Yeah, the one, the one that I, I have one, so that's, the one that I have is sixteen feet long and nine and a half feet high. Just about.
I, I feel like the statement saying consists only of registered items. That kind of covers a lot of, you know, not, not storing items, general items, that have to be registered. So I, I, I'm glad that that's in there, otherwise I would have wanted to change, change it, but that kind of covers everything else.
So one, one thing, um, so car haulers, um. You know, from time to time, I'm fighting with people that have car haulers, they like to park them in areas that they're not allowed. You know, some people bring them home and I have to send zoning letters to the neighborhood because they'll park it in front of the house. So, um, I don't know, does this, is he asking to store car haulers too?
Says trails.
Not a car haul that will haul like eight vehicles or something like that?
No, 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 this would be like a, a race car trailer, or I.
Okay.
Which is.
No, you don't need to have a picture on it. But knowing these type of vehicles, those puppies can be big.
Yeah, I mean, permanently still, like, letting them park there overnight and stuff like that.
But if he's looking to store them.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know.
That's the greater than twenty-four hours and less than twenty-four hours.
A car hauler with like eight.
No, 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 no tractor trailers.
Okay.
They'll fit on the property.
What happens is they idle them and then, you know, and this is, these houses are close together, you know, and it's just not a good idea for that, so. You know, as long as, you know, it's in his business plan that it's not gonna be car, you know, tractor trailers parked there.
I, I think we're not talking apples and apples, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And I know what Josh is like about, but a full blown race trailer tow behind.
Okay.
Those puppies can be big.
Yeah.
You could hold, you know, two or three cars and they could, they could be big, so. Obviously, the height can't be high in the building.
Right.
Well, the other comment is it says twenty-eight vehicles inside of one section and then forty in the other.
Peter, I, I brought that up. The, the difference was sixteen to twenty-eight if he gets lifts in there. And the others. Also, if he, yeah, does away with the miscellaneous storage and packing, he can get up to forty there. Yeah, that was by reading this saying, what are we talking about here?
And then he was saying motorcycles, too. And I know you're close, but the reason I put that in there was you had a question last time about what is the most number of vehicles you can store here, so. And that's why I wanted to put, so you can absolutely put a cap on no more than forty total vehicles inside the building.
So I make a motion with the stipulations of the fire department.
Motion to, uh, grant the permit with the stipulation that it will, uh, be accepted, be reviewed and accepted by the fire department.
Um, before I call for a second, um, Brian, you probably answered his question. You ready to make that motion, where it wasn't the last meeting?
No, that's true, I can't.
No.
I was asking.
Sitting members, which are the four of you without Brian.
Yes. No, not at all.
Just wanna make sure what you think is the right way.
Absolutely, absolutely, I don't wanna.
He, he would have had to watch that prior to the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I watched. I watched it, I just, I read.
Bless you, I, I'll make the motion. To grant the application with the stipulations that we have discussed. The, with the stipulations as noted, yeah, you know that, yeah.
Anybody care to make a second? Second.
Okay.
All favor.
I, I, I.
Okay, so what'll happen is I will write up the decision and then file the town clerk and then that's a twenty day field period.
Great, thank you. I couldn't figure it out, I need to get that one beat, I think it's a fun way, I think you.
Any, um. Questions, implements, concerns on the, um. Can I get a second on that?